Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawn?
Yes.
Chair Beard?
Yes.
Five eyes with James O'Connor absent as well as Val Nguyen.
Okay, I have no matters. Any commissioners or the director, do you have any matters to bring forward? Seeing done, we can move to adjournment to the next meeting of Tuesday, October 27th, for the Housing Authority. Where's your?
Thank you. We will now call the Garden Grove City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fawn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Nguyen?
Thank you. Kingsley, may I ask you to lead us in the invocation?
Please first. Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to deliberate and make decisions on issues before us, provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the best decisions for this fine Garden Grove community we serve. Amen.
Councilmember Bowie, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please testify and pray. My hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We had the closed session. I don't believe we have any reportable action, do we?
Yeah, for the record, we met. The City Council met in closed session, labor negotiations. There was no reportable action. We also met in closed session, joint successor agency and City Council, no reportable action. We did not get to the third item on the closed session agenda. We'll be adjourning the council meeting to the final closed session item.
Thank you. We have a couple of presentations tonight. Start with the Community Spotlight. In recognition of a Special Olympics athlete, Gregory Kozlowski. And I believe, Kingsley, are you going to do the presentation on that? Is that correct?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, tonight, the City of Garden Grove, City Council is proud to recognize Gregory Kozlowski for competing in the 2015 Special Olympic World Games. Would Gregory Kozlowski please come forward to the mic over there? This year, the Special Olympics World Games were held locally here in Los Angeles. There were 165 countries represented by 6,500 athletes. It was the largest sports and humanitarian event this year, and the single biggest event in Los Angeles since the 1984 Olympic Games. Through the power of sport, Special Olympics strives to create a better world by fostering the acceptance of all people. Special Olympics athlete Gregory is a native of Garden Grove and a Pacific High School graduate. He was selected out of 16,000 golfers to represent Southern California. A gold medal finish in last year's qualifiers secured his place in this year's nine-hole division. Greg placed fourth in the Summer Games, third in the OC Regional Games, and fifth in the World Games. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Gregory Kozlowski with a gift in appreciation and recognition of his achievements. The City congratulates and wishes you much success in your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Thank you. Colleagues, will you please come up and join me in presenting your work?
I'd like to have everybody follow me in the athlete oath. Let me win.
Let me win.
But if I can't win?
But if I can't win?
Let me be brave in the attempt.
Let me be brave in the attempt.
And I would like to thank the council members and everybody here for the invitation and the award. Thanks.
Thanks, Gregory.
Okay, and we have one more Community Spotlight, and I am very honored to do this one myself. Next, Garden Grove City Council is honored to recognize Mr. Alan Roder for his dedicated service to the City of Garden Grove. Alan, would you please come forward? As you all know, we recently announced the hiring of former Assistant City Manager for the City of Cincinnati, Scott Stiles, as our new city manager. During the eight-month interim, the city was under the excellent leadership of retired Costa Mesa City Manager Alan Roder. Even though this was a short-term assignment for Alan, I know it was deeply meaningful to him, as an original resident of Garden Grove and fellow Rancho Alameda Salona, as well as to all city personnel. We are extremely thankful for his professional knowledge, expertise, and guidance that have helped us arrive at this important point in the permanent administration of the city. On behalf of City Council, I would like to express our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Alan Roder and present him with a Crystal Memento in honor of his service. Thank you very much, Alan. Colleagues, would you please come forward?
for me to serve you and to serve the residents of Garden Grove. This has been beyond anything I could have possibly imagined. I've had just the warmest reception from you as both council members and individuals, from the senior management, the department directors, certainly City Managers Office, all staff have been terrific, the sworn personnel, our technical staff, our support personnel, field personnel, and absolutely from the residents and the business community. You have just welcomed me and treated me with the utmost of respect, and I deeply, deeply appreciate that. As I think back to my meeting with you four gentlemen last December, and Steve was good enough to drive me around town, and Chris and Fat, and Chris reintroduced me to a lot of the local dining establishments where we talked about the challenges ahead. I look back and feel very, very good about the job that you as a council and your staff and the community have done in moving forward those items that were a priority to you and what seems now way back then. We've made great progress. We haven't accomplished everything that we might have hoped to, but we certainly have moved along the initiatives that are important to you as a council and important to the people in this community. Again, it has been a tremendous experience, a tremendous privilege of mine, and I leave you in excellent hands in Mr. Stiles. He is a consummate professional, brings a terrific work ethic, and I know he and your staff will serve you as a council and members of the community extremely well. You are certainly fortunate to have them here in Garden Grove. And lastly, and to me personally, the most important thing I want to share is my undying love and respect for my wife, Kristi, for whom I could not have served you in the manner in which I have these past many months. She was supportive when I first wildly introduced the idea of coming to interview before you, and has been terrifically supportive, picking up all the responsibilities, family responsibilities, household responsibilities, at the same time as she runs her own company. So, I'm kind of the lazy one in the household, and she has just really allowed me to do the very, very important job for you as council and staff members of the community. And because this council was so good and allowing me to serve you and making an investment in helping the organization move forward, on behalf of Kristi and I, we'd like to make a modest donation to the Garden Grove Community Foundation because I want to be sure to invest more than just myself in the improvement and continued betterment of Garden Grove. So I'll give that to Mayor Protem.
Thank you genuinely, Alan, for everything you've done.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I could just make one or two very quick comments, if you wouldn't mind, members of the City Council. You know, when you, you know, you accept a new job and you come across the country to come to a brand-new situation, you know, you never know quite, you know, what to expect. You never know quite how you're going to be received. And, you know, one of the very first people that I met when I got here was Mr. Roder. And, you know, from the very beginning, you know, Alan has been so helpful to me. He's been such a great colleague. He's been, he's given me great advice. And, you know, when you talk to other city managers all throughout Orange County and even some city managers that I know in other parts of California, you know, they all say the same thing about Alan. He's very well-respected, very well-admired. You hear the word, "He's a pro's pro," over and over again. And so, you know, I don't think you could have picked a better person to help with this transition that you were going through. And, you know, all throughout my conversations with him, the one thing that always came through was his dedication to Garden Grove. Literally, growing up here, and just, it became very clear how important this community was to him. So, you know, I want to personally thank Alan for all his support to me. Very, very helpful, and it just made my transition so much, so much easier. So I'm very grateful, and, you know, I really do think the citizens of Garden Grove owe you a debt of gratitude for your service to the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to written communications. Number 8A, we have a request from OC Autism.
Mayor Protem, we have a request from OC Autism for the city to cosponsor the Sixth Annual OC Autism Breakfast with Santa Claus on Saturday, December 12, 2015, and a request to waive fees for the exclusive use of the Atlanta's Play Center.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Or perhaps a motion to support the?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll now move on to oral communications for City Council, Successor Agency, Sand District, and Public Financing Authority, all in one. I do have a number of cards, starting with Gary Hewitt. And next is Verla Lambert.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Gary Hewitt. I'm the manager of Transit Non-Motorized Planning at the Orange County Transportation Authority. And tonight, I'm going to give you guys an update on three of our transit initiatives that are going to be coming up in the next couple of months here. The first program that you may have heard of is our Bus Stop Spacing Efficiency Program. Through a recent customer survey, we've been getting a lot of feedback that the bus service needs to speed up. Travel times in the bus system are just not competitive with other modes. And so, one of the things that we're looking at doing is trying to improve that operating speed by looking at consolidating bus stops based on low usage and also spacing. Stops are spaced close together. It's a pilot program. We've chosen two routes, routes 53 and 64. Route 53 travels from Anaheim to Irvine via Cattella and Main Street. Route 64, excuse me, comes through Garden Grove on its way from Tustin to Huntington Beach on First and Bolsa. Our public communication's going to be directly with our customers. We're going to be reaching out to them at the, at the potentially impacted stops. And that's going to be happening in October. We'll be posting information at the stops and also on board our buses on those routes. We sent letters to all the cities. I know you guys got one, since the route comes through here, but as at this point, none of the stops in the City of Garden Grove are on the list for potential consolidation. We want to let you know about the program. If we do do other routes, there may be some in Garden Grove. And if we do remove stops, that would happen in February of 2016. The second initiative is Bravo Route 560. So the OCTA has received a cap-and-trade grant to purchase vehicles to implement new service on Westminster 17th, which comes through the city. This would be similar to the Bravo bus service on Harbor Boulevard that you may have seen. Limited stop bus service, kind of like a BRT service. And as part of that, we need to go out to the public and get participation from them on the changes to the local route and also the locations of the stops and the service. And we plan on doing that in early November. So there'll be three community meetings along the route where we'll get input from the public. The last item is the Central Harbor Transit Corridor Study. This is a study that's going to look at Harbor Boulevard and potential future transit capital investment connecting from where the Future Fixed Guideway would come in at Westminster and Harbor up to the Fullerton Transportation Center. As part of this, we'd be evaluating different alignments as well as different technologies. It's an 18-month study. We just kicked off and are working with your city staff initially to gather information and develop the purpose and need for the project. We're anticipating that we'll have two rounds of community meetings to get feedback, and the first set of those meetings would probably be early 2016. So that's those updates on those projects. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, for coming over and giving us those updates. Next is Verla Lambert.
Good evening, council, staff, and Garden Grove. I have been up at the State of Washington for the last six weeks, over near Everett. I did hear about Garden Grove sending up some of our firemen to help with the humongous fire that was there. I also heard about the Officer Hatfield and his outreach for checking up on the homeless. Makes me very proud to have, to be from down Garden Grove. If only more of our cities could have a few of these people and do some of the same things, which I'm sure they probably do, I just, they just don't hit the news. But this is what makes America great, is when we can all work together. And also, I want to make the, give you an update on, about street repairs in my neighborhood. They've been very busy while I was gone. And today, they came in and did all three of the streets, four of the streets, and that area, all of, in our little triangle there. And they've grinded them down, and we're just waiting on the next notification for the next step. And I thank you very much, and Public Works is doing a great job. I'll start taking names, but you keep these, this crew and these guys busy. Thank you.
Josh McIntosh. To be followed by Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, city staff and residents. I wanted to thank Mr. Roder while he was here, so I'm sorry I missed him, but Mr. Stiles, welcome aboard. Thank you. Mr. Stiles got off on a good foot with me the other night, by the way. I'm going to tell him about your app, I'm sorry. It's the coolest thing. Mr. Stiles has challenged our IT department to come up with an application for your phone that you can report graffiti or abandoned shopping carts or debris in the city by just kind of pointing your phone at it. It works like a GPS system. And soon, the Garden Grove webpage and applications on your phone will be able to use that. So thank you so much. Awesome, awesome idea. I wish I'd thought of that. I did think of an idea, though. In our water bills, we get a little request to donate each month, you know, a couple bucks for the community foundation and whatnot. And in previous months, this was directed specifically towards the Vietnam War Museum, which has been kind of defunct now. We've taken away from that. And my idea is to keep that donation portion there, but funds would go to end homelessness in Garden Grove and alleviate that problem, hopefully. So I'd like to introduce that and hopefully get that put into our water bills and have an earmarked fund for that. Maybe it works through the NICC, which I'm happy to be a member of. And I forgot to mention that the other night at our last meeting, and now we're going to go into the meeting. Item 21A on the agenda tonight, you'll see first off in our comments that commissioners did have some issues we wanted to bring up. While I'm in no way trying to say, "Don't pass this," because I absolutely want us to pass this, our, our team does a great job with the resources they have. They try their best. But there's a few things I'd like to see done a little bit differently in the, in the future. When we do a large-scale project such as the Burke's Triangle, I would think that we could add some low-income housing to that. We've got no low-income housing to the 674 units being developed over there. And why not? We can, we can do that. We've always got to have room for the less fortunate. Okay, we also allocated 1.7 million of the budget to go to hotel development on Harbor Boulevard through, I believe it was called Economic Development. While I recognize the rewards of cleaning up Harbor and getting rid of the crackhead motels and whatnot, those developers have enough money. They don't need to take our money away from our homeless people and our low-income families. We've got a waiting list years long to get into these programs, these HUD homes and whatnot. And I don't think the developers should have got that money. So I'd like to see that go away. There's other ways they can acquire money. And last, no, not last, today's, Orange County Register had an article about the Poseidon Adventure, and the $300,000 that's been given to local politicians by Poseidon to support their campaigns. We've got donations coming in from this company that is bound to make millions a year if they should get their, how shall I call it, let's just say, water that we could get elsewhere for much, much cheaper without damaging the coastline and whatnot. So I'm hoping everyone will go online and read this article. It's on the Orange County Register, today's edition. It's regarding Poseidon. It does mention my petition, which I started two months ago, and I'd like to ask every Garden Grove resident to do the right thing and sign this petition because we do not need this Poseidon Desalination Center. Absolute waste of money, and it's a disaster to our coastline. So if you go to, let's see, sorry I didn't have this a little better prepared. Change.org, the petition is on there. You just have to type in Poseidon, and I'd love it if everyone would sign that. Last but not least, on a positive note, let's, let's all remember, Open Streets is coming up for Garden Grove, October the 10th. We'll be shutting down the downtown area. There's going to be awesome music. I'm DJing it this year. I'm happy to be providing music, participating for the second year in a row. And also, KCRW DJ, Raoul Campos, is going to be there, and he is awesome. So we've got some good talent coming. Hope everybody comes out to that, October 10th. Thank you very much for your time. Have a swell evening.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell. Where'd you go? There you are. To be followed by Stephanie Klopfenstein.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, City Council, staff. I'd like to talk about the American Legion, particularly our post in Midway City on Beach Boulevard. How's that? Is that better? Anyway, what I'd like to talk about is the events that we have at our American Legion Post. Many of you attended an event that was held at the Lions Club not long ago where they had a swing band that was performing. Well, that swing band performs the last Monday of every month at our American Legion Post. So next Monday, the band will be there. So if you like swing music, come on by. The public is welcome. It's $3 to come in and listen to the band, and they do a wonderful job of playing the hits from the '40s and '50s. We also have $1 Taco Night on Thursdays. Every Thursday, anyone can come in, get tacos at $1 apiece, nacho chips with cheese. We have desserts. So come on in and visit our post. There's a lot of members of our post that are Garden Grove residents because years ago, the post that was in Garden Grove unfortunately had to close. So they amalgamated with Midway City. So I'd say at least half of the members of our post are Garden Grove residents. So the public is welcome to our events. We'd love to have you. And Councilmember Fawn is one of our ardent supporters. We'd love to have him come and visit us whenever he can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephanie Klopfenstein. To be followed by Maureen Black.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Stephanie Klopfenstein. I'm a fourth-generation Garden Grove resident and a board member of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. I have two items this evening. First is that I attended the Vector Control District's meeting last Thursday, September 17th, at 3:00 PM. And I'd like to first go on record as saying that that's the absolute worst time to hold a meeting that is open to the public. I was one of the first speakers to voice my continued concern over the communication methods used by Vector Control. I also mentioned the continued lack of transparency. I also mentioned the continued lack of transparency and the need for a greater level of public awareness and information, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Bowie for attending and also voicing his concerns. The biggest takeaway from the meeting, to me, was that Vector Control is a house divided. Many board members found out about the aerial spraying the same day as the public. And there was also board members that asked why an emergency meeting wasn't held, and others expressed concern that duet chemical, about the duet chemical, and hoped that Vector would look for alternative methods rather than spraying via aircraft. The bottom line is, communication starts with Vector Control. If they want to claim we all have a shared responsibility, then they need to help foster an environment of clarity, inclusion, and education with the citizens of Orange County. In March of 2015, Vector Control voted at their meeting, and I quote from those minutes, "To use Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated as the aerial contractor should it become necessary to treat adult mosquitoes from the air." The public deserved to hear about this in March, not when the plan was finalized and not by social media, six days before the spring. The citizens of Garden Grove and all of Orange County deserve to be kept in the loop to all major decisions and policies made or considered by Vector Control going forward. So, thank you. And I'm going to have a drastic change of pace here. On another note, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association has a Halloween festival coming up on October 24th at 5:30. A gracious Garden Grove resident is hosting the event in her backyard, and there'll be decorations, games, candy, music, and costume contests, and also yummy food, just for a small fee. It's a great chance for families to get together, dress up, and get to know their neighbors and have some fun. We'll have flyers soon, so this is kind of more of a save-the-date statement, so remember October 24th, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association Halloween Party, and I'll have more information to follow. Thanks again.
She needs a public relations job. I think we're gonna lose her real quick. Hi, I'm Maureen Blackman, and I have a couple of questions. I want to also back up Stephanie's opinion as far as Vector Control and their communications. I think they will, they need to get their communication link, chain of command in order. I appreciate that the trustee comes out to every council meeting, but I'd like to have it more in-depth in terms of, this is the number of mosquitoes, this is the number of deaths, this is the number, more factual data as opposed to, and in conjunction with how to, you know, wear long sleeves and dump your water and that type of thing. So I really think that they put all the cities at a disadvantage, they burned up a lot of resources that they didn't need to burn up, and I think it left everybody scrambling over holiday weekend that we really value that time, and we were pretty much just left in to scramble around and see how we could prevent the spraying, or at least get the word out. And shifting gears again, is, I was here to talk about the budget, maybe I missed some of the budget workshops, but I was, I knew that we had a $6 million deficit, but I'm really like, when numbers come around, my head just starts swirling. And so when I see $28 million bonds and $10 million this and that, and it just makes me wonder, is the public know what we're doing with this debt? Why do we have to do it? And, you know, what the payback is? What we're gonna use that money for? So those are things that I would really like to hear. And also, in the past, I guess I'm used to having Matt Fortell run the show in terms of rolling out these items, and to have our financial director do it, it's a little, was a little bit startling to me. Again, I could just be naïve, but I'd like to see some information come from the city manager's office in terms of what it is, what, what kind of problems we're in. That brings me to 10B, when I say for, Matt Fortell, because when you have to drill into a report, and drill into that report again, and find out that what we're really talking about is more digital billboards, which I go back years on this, to see that we're gonna give away a sign that several months ago, we gave some property to Clear Channel, but in return for that, we were getting about $100,000 worth of work in terms of taking down other signs. So when I see a report that says there's no value in an easement access, it makes me wonder. I, I didn't see the name of the dealership, I just had to be familiarized enough to know where that sign is and what we were talking about. I know they have rights to put a digital board up there, and I think we go back to the same old, how many signs are we gonna have? How, who's gonna own the signs? Once that sign gets up, how are we gonna say no to the others? So I'd like to have that item taken off, so we could have a public discussion about not just giving away this sign for $0, but to also negotiate or have a public discussion about how many digital billboards do we want on that little tiny stretch? And I'm not a proponent of giving anything away, especially when we've got $6 million in debt. They want that sign, buy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Faschinelli.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, ladies and gentlemen. In December, I anticipate that several of the judges of the Orange County Superior Court will be retiring, and I'd like to announce that I, Frederick Faschinelli, am a candidate for Superior Court Judge for 2016. I've been a lawyer for 21 years, I have practiced in every aspect of law, from the federal courts to state and local courts, and I've, I've worked with the District Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office, and I've been a lawyer for all my life. So, I'd just like to say that in 2016, please consider my candidacy. If you have any questions, you can email me at fredforocjudge@gmail.com, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I am Michael Hirst, the district manager of the Orange County Vector Control District. And I, I've seen that I'm on the agenda for later in the evening, but I'd like to make a few statements now, if that's all right.
Please.
It's true, last March, we did vote to open a contract on a contingency with Clark, Clark Mosquito Control for aerial application. But that was in anticipation of needing to do it sometime in the future. On, I believe it was March 31st, this council and whoever else was here was given a report so stating by this city's trustee, and we sent out the information at that point. As far as notification goes, I'm doubting that any amount of notification would have sufficed. We got clearance to run this operation six days before we, or seven days before we had to start. We did this in response to deteriorating conditions. Last week, or two weeks ago when I was here, there were five human cases, today there's 28, and one of them has died. It wasn't a decision made lightly, so. We count on our partners to help us notify the public. The notification is not as easy as it used to be. You used to get an article in the Times and the Register, and you'd pretty well notified most of the county. Now, I don't think anybody reads either of those papers. It's all social media, or almost all social media. The Register's getting smaller and smaller every week. It's not, it's not what it once was. So, in the, and when my item comes up on the agenda, I'd like to get into more detail and make a small PowerPoint presentation. Any questions?
And last, but certainly not least, Robin Marcario.
Good morning, council, staff, and Garden Grove residents. I'm Robin Marcario. I'm a lifelong resident, like many of you here. I'm also your appointed Vector Control trustee, and I spoke with you last, a couple weeks ago, about the proposed spraying for the adult mosquitoes. As the director just mentioned, that decision was under careful consideration, and weather conditions was one of the thing, and the criteria within numbers of mosquitoes that are infected, because we trap and test them. Quite literally, right now, 50% of the mosquitoes out there are infected with West Nile virus. Now, when's your bit? Depending on your health, if you are particularly an elderly person and you get West Nile virus, those are the ones that we are seeing die from the disease. You can get just flu-like symptoms, anywhere up to paralysis, and learning to talk, and eat, and walk again, that neuro-invasive form of the disease is very serious. That is why we made that decision. We made the decision based on the fact, on a set of criteria, and we gave the authority to the director when that criteria was met and all of the contracts were in order to do the spraying. That spraying is done, has been done for a decade across the country. Millions of acres over metropolitan areas, over rural areas, that has been used to break the cycle of adult mosquitoes. Now, we just had a recent rain. It would've been nice if it was a little, little heavier, and it would have washed out the drains and ditches. You would think that with the drought, there would be less water, and so therefore, less mosquitoes. But the converse is actually the case. Under the infrastructure, because of the lack of drainage, all this debris of leaves and trash are trapping what little water is in there. If you open these, these sewer systems and the gutters and their, mosquitoes will come, just literally coming out of there. Our technicians are constantly treating the larva, which we have done as a district for 67 years. We have treated for mosquito larva, that has been our response plan. But because of last year's high numbers of 28, or 280 victims with West Nile virus, and nine deaths associated with it, we had to come up and step up the process. It was carefully thought through, you are absolutely correct. Anytime you roll out a new campaign, there are ways to improve the notification process. We are learning, we are grateful to the Garden Grove City Council for putting it on the website, we've put it on Facebook. Fat Bowie was fabulous in coming to the Vector Control meeting, his outreach and his, as well as you, Chris Van, your connections in the Vietnamese community can be very valuable to let them know. You know, we've got brochures, we try to reach that community as well, but you as elected officials are a little, you have a little more muscle than, you know, than the Orange County Vector Control. Several, a period of time ago, Orange County, the grand jury said, "Orange County Vector Control's doing a great job, but nobody knows what you do." So in response to that, two years ago, we added mosquito to our name, and we changed the logo to make it a little more prominent. We're trying to make ourselves more available, more accessible, and educate the public. I will certainly be available to give more detailed comments, I want to respect the five minutes that everyone is granted during oral communications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes comments. Members, would you like to respond to anything? Anyone? No? Yes. Okay. Then we will move on to, Reese, the city council, and we will conduct the successor agency business.
Well, the chair, may I ask to move item 23?
Oh, sure.
Which we are going to discuss the role of city's entities on the OC Vector Control District Board of Trustees.
Okay.
The reason for, for this is, I would like to, you know, right after we clear some of the comment. You know, I would like to move it after the auto-communication, so that the public fresh from discussing the, the issue of the mosquito spraying for the West Nile epidemic, for us to discuss that and figure out the lesson learned, so that we all can work better with the OC VCD, and the city and the resident would work together to, to see what we can do to help the issue that we had during the, the planned spraying of the West Nile virus. You know, during the, that weekend, that long weekend, a lot, we received a lot of email with concern from the residents. I, I believe that the, you know, our resident are very concerned, because either they haven't had a chance to, to voice their input or concern, or understand more about what are the risks, you know, that the own-house risk. And, and that some of them, it caught them by surprise, because they didn't know about the spraying until only a few days from it. And I took that concern and attend the OC VCD Board Meeting to, to try to understand the issue a little more, and this, I, I felt that there are a lot of, there's a few misconceptions that I had before I come to the, to the Board Meetings. But there's also some other concerns that I had that still, you know, are still with me today, so I would like to discuss that, so that, you know, our city, our city council, our city staff, and the resident can, you know, can know what, you know, how do we work with the Board, and how do we support the Board in order to, you know, have a better control over the West Nile virus. One thing that I, I find out is that, you know, our representative, Mrs. Ruben Macaro, did not know about the decision to spray that until the day after the, you know, the city had been notified, as well as many, as well as a few other trustee. They were not, they were notified just as the public being notified. So, the notion that, that she did not alert the, the city, you know, early, is not, is a, you know, it's not that helpful, because she did not know that until, until it. The second thing that I came across is, I believe that the Board have a very difficult issue to, to address, which is the, the West Nile being spread out by, by the mosquito. It is not an easy task for them, and I believe that they have acted in the interest of the public health, and that they are trying to, they, they have a very small windows of opportunity to put a, a stop on the mosquito. However, I, I, why I understand that, I, I see that we do have an underlying issue where we could not effectively notify the public or educate the public ahead of time. Also, we did not have a, there are a lot of people who are concerned that the spray might be, might be dangerous to their health, whether that, that concern is, is legitimate or not, but, but it is a genuine concern. And we, as a, as a government agency body, did not have a, you know, an effort to, to educate and, and, you know, address their, you know, their concern. And lastly, we can, I, I felt that we cannot just decide that we had post, had tried to communicate to the public, and, and post the, the spraying on a social website, and we, and, and on some of the mainstream newspapers, and thought that we had done enough job to, to notify the public. I believe that we should do more than that, and trying to get, get the information out ahead of time, and when it is that we would decide to spray, that would be just, you know, when we turn the light on, the public already aware of it. So I, I think, and I hope that the city, and the Board, and the resident, and the media could somehow have a dialogue, so that we can support each other in reaching out to, to, you know, the resident, so that, so that the communication issue, or lack of communication would be appropriately addressed. And, and saying that, I, I felt that our representative, she, it is truly that she can vote and be independent, and she does not need to vote or take the direction from the city council, but I believe that she needs to do more than that. Our representative need to convey the message from, from the city council, our concern. Our representative need to convey the message from the city council, our concern, from the resident to the board, and then take the message from the board and communicate that to the city, back to the city, so that we can convey, you know, the message from the board to our, you know, resident. I hope that, that moving forward, our representative will take a more active role in listen to the city council, listen to the resident and communicate back, their concern back to the board. So the board then can figure out what need to be done to address those concern.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anybody else want to jump in on that particular item? And it's not an action item, right? It was just for discussion.
No, it's just a discussion item.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm glad we brought that forward for discussion. We will now go back to where we left off, which is recessing to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll for successor agency?
There was possibly a PowerPoint that was available by Michael Hurst. I'm not sure if, do you still want, oh, he'll be doing that at a later date.
Well, yeah, we just did bring 23A forward, so.
Yes, that's what they.
I don't think the video would be necessary. I think the underlying message is that we need to have, you know, better communication between the city, the city, the board and the resident. And we hope that the representative for our city will be a conduit to facilitate that communication.
Mr. Mayor Protam, can I ask a question? I meant to bring it up. We, going forward, vector control, well, you mentioned it has been noted, there have been notarized in the past, while it's definitely on the radar of a lot of people now, spraying and such. We know that 2015 spraying will not go on. 2016, what are your projections? What the lesson learned is where are we going to develop this network and information and communication and education to people going forward? Because do you project spraying in 2016?
I want to have the ability to do it here in the commentary. When I say large, it's a safe group of citizens, please, we have organized, not to, we're big, it's in you, and we will not search you up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Would you like to go up to the, sorry to drag you back up to, back to the microphone so we can understand.
The vector control districts are given the authority to treat mosquitoes, either from the air or from the ground, or however they deem it necessary. It's much like the fire department saying, "You've got to evacuate." It's not something you take a vote on. They come in and say, "Get out of your house," and you get out of your house. That's sort of what we do, but we opted to try and communicate as best we could with as many people as we could about the situation. Now, I don't think that there'd be any timeline that would be long enough for some people to be, to consider notification. It's not like we didn't have a lot of people that knew about it. Thousands, thousands of people knew about it. We wanted to stop it, but we had the misfortune of getting trapped in a timeframe that had many cities closed on Friday and still are closed on Monday. And we were counting on some participation by the cities in the communication effort. So we didn't have weeks that we sat on the news. We made the decision, went forward, and it ran into a holiday weekend.
Okay. I understand that. My question is directed more towards 2016. The spraying, there's a projection of spraying happening then. Is that correct?
There's a possibility.
Possibility, okay. Then we have to work towards an alert to people as far advanced notice as possible. So we can take precautionary measures, even if it's considered healthy or safe, I should say, the chemical is used. Still, we can provide that information to people and they can take their own precautions.
Absolutely. We would hope that you would be there for us to do that.
Okay. So the challenge to us is to work with our trustee, the representative for Garden Grove, to do that and communicate with the city and turn the city being aware, or being aware first and then informing citizens thereafter.
Yeah, but now, when she informed you that we were liable to do this in March, we didn't make the decision to do it until September. So we didn't sit on that decision because we were prepared to do it in March, but we weren't doing it. And as an example, what we thought was going to be a hotspot this year, because it was a hotspot last year, has had very little activity. Santa Ana had 22 cases before another city had one. This year, they have one case, and we've got 28 in the county. So it's moving around.
Okay. And there's no hope inside of ever controlling it, containing it completely?
Not really. Realistically, there's not a likelihood.
It's here to stay indefinitely.
Now, one piece of good news is that the, we've posulated that there's a lot of mosquito protection going on in the underground storm sewers. This last rain did flush a lot of those out. That was a good rainfall for a lot of us. Our counts went down, trap counts, the storm drains went down. Now, we're hoping that that was related to the rainfall because we're expecting a lot of rainfall this winter. But those are horrible places. Every corrugated pipe, every two inches is another little puddle for mosquitoes to breathe in. It's a real challenge, and we can't go down in there.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I believe that the concern from our resident that we heard over the last couple of weeks are still strong and are still there. So I would suggest that our trustee, perhaps the city can facilitate the initial meeting, but perhaps our trustee could try to get the, you know, some of the resident to, you know, volunteer to form a committee to, so that we can, you know, identify what are the question, what are the concern that our residents still feel strongly about and perhaps bring that back to the board and have the board, you know, address that.
That's information we'd love to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would now like to call to order the successor agency business. Madam Clerk, if you would like to call roll.
Yes. Member Bowie.
Here.
Member Nguyen. Member Phong.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. Start it with consent items.
Move approved.
10A, B, C. Is there anything we need to do on this to?
Mr. Mayor Protam, members of council, if you do, I know there were some comments earlier about it. I know 10A has a yellow draft report that can be removed, but 10A and 10B are on the calendar as indicated. Mr. Delalanga from the Finance Economic Development Department is here if you want a few brief comments on it, but it's entirely, entirely up to you.
Is it necessary that we pull it, or if we go ahead and take action, can we assume that's excluding the yellow that was, that was mentioned? Is that one?
That, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so at this point, just to make the record clear, you have two yellows, one on 10A and one on 10B. What we're requesting is that you disregard the yellow for 10A and that you approve 10A as originally presented on the agenda, and that you do approve the yellow for 10B.
Okay, got it. And?
Remove.
Now, we're wanting, we want to pull the yellows.
This guy's 10.
We're going to wait.
We're doing what?
We're supposed to pull all the yellows.
Okay.
Let's add 10.
10.
10.
That's the change.
The intent is to remove the sign from 10A.
10A originally had a sign.
10B, the yellow.
The original 10.
Has the sign, right?
The yellow to read the time.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where you want.
There's yellow for 10B, but 10A.
10A is supposed to prove that we don't understand the issue.
Yes, and the question that they approved, 10A, now.
No, we didn't.
We did, 10B.
Okay.
Because we're removing the sign, we're dropping the money on the ROPS number 10.
So there were questions.
56, is that new here?
Yes.
Did he have the items listed?
Yeah, there's the items on here.
Okay, that's, that's what I did.
Yeah, we fixed it.
So what is it?
For starters, how about I suggest I'll pull 10A and 10B?
Yes.
And then can I get?
That's the best way to do it.
Can I get a motion on the balance, which is basically just receive and file and approval of the warrants?
Move approved.
I second it. Call the vote.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Phong.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, so 10A. Maybe we get some clarification on exactly where, how we're proceeding with 10A.
Okay, I'll present the report on 10A, which is the recognized obligation schedule for ROPS period 1516B, which runs from January to June 2016. So staff has prepared this for consideration, agency's consideration and approval. This, the attached resolution approves the ROPS in the gross amount of $11,083,909. $10,945,916 of that is requested from the redevelopment property tax trust fund. This will also authorize its transmittal from the successor agency to the oversight board. So in addition to the first payment of the Water Park Hotel being on this ROPS, which is a large change, there are a couple other additions as a result of recent DOF determinations and/or court rulings. The first is the relisting of the housing successor administrative cost allowance of $75,000. Successor agency staff is relisting this as a result of a recent court decision in which cities whose respective housing authorities assumed the housing responsibilities of the former redevelopment agency, they are now eligible to receive administrative funding pursuant to the dissolution act. The second item is the relisting of the Site C Hotel project on the ROPS. A recent court decision for the city of Orange and subsequent DOF determination for the city of San Juan Capistrano indicate that the DOF should consider and find that the disposition and development agreement for the Site C Hotel project is an enforceable obligation of the former Garden Grove Agency for Community Development. Now, although the former agency's director signed the Site C DDA after AB 26 was approved back in June of 2011, the original, before it went into effect, the Site C DDA was approved by the board of the former Garden Grove Agency for Community Development and was signed by the developer prior to that date and was therefore a legally binding contract before the, between the former agency and the developer as of the date of AB 26. As such, costs associated with the preparation of the Site C project are being included on the ROPS as an enforceable obligation. Also, in a separate item to the successor agency, the corresponding changes being made to the long-range property management plan, which is 10B, which we'll get to in a second. And then the third item is the relisting of judgment costs associated with the ruling on Limone et al. versus State of California Department of Finance. These costs were initially denied by the Department of Finance on ROPS 1516A and, or 1516B, and the plaintiffs sued the DOF. On June 5th, the Superior Court of California ruled that the stipulation for entry of interlocutory judgment between the successor agency and the plaintiffs is an enforceable obligation. And as a result, line items 49 and 50 have been added to the ROPS to satisfy our obligations. So, city attorney, do we want to remove an item from the ROPS pursuant to request?
Yeah, if the only item that's being added under the yellow is 56, that's the only item that we want to, we want the board to approve without item 56.
Okay.
And I think that the original agenda item, the white, does not have 56.
Okay. So we'll be, we will be approving the ROPS without item 56 on it. So the staff recommends that we adopt the attached resolution approving recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of January 1, 2016 through June 30, 2016, without item 56 on it pursuant to section 34177 of the Health and Safety Code. We authorize the director or his designated transmit the approved ROPS to the oversight board for approval. That is my presentation available for any questions.
Thank you. Hannah, what exactly is item 56?
Item 56 was what was being added on the yellow and is a reference to the sign on Trask.
Yeah. So to clarify all that confusion is, we want to see the ROPS move forward to the Department of Finance per staff's recommendation, but pull that one particular peculiar item out so that we can talk about that as a separate matter without holding up any of the other kind of more pressing items that are contained in the ROPS. So with that, I would like to go ahead and move 10A subject to the original staff recommendation and excluding the yellow that was given to us. I second it. Call the vote.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Phong.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
10B. Is there, is there anything we need to do on 10B, or it's just?
10B, the recommendation is to approve the yellow, which also removes the sign on Trask.
Okay. So moved with the yellow. Right?
Yeah. Second. Is there a motion?
Call the vote.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Phong.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Great. Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn successor agency and convene straight to the sanitary district President Fan.
Thank you. Can you please call roll, Madam Clerk?
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice President Beard.
Here.
President Phong.
Here. We have the consent items of receiving and filing the minutes from May 12th and August 25th. May please have a motion.
So moved. Second it.
Call for vote, please.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Yes.
President Phong.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Any matters from the board? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the district until the next meeting of Tuesday, October 27th, at 6:30.
Thank you, President Fan. We will now reconvene city council together with public finance authority. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll again?
Member Beard.
Here.
Member Bowie.
Here.
Member Phong.
Here.
Vice Chair Jones.
Here. Consent items, receive and file minutes from June 14th, June 28th, public finance authority meetings. Move the motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Member Beard.
Yes.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Phong.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. Public hearing items, 17A, this is a joint matter for public finance authority and city council.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, members of city council, and members of the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority Board. Tonight, I have before you a request for adoption of resolutions to authorize the execution and delivery of the lease revenue bonds, series 2015A, to refund the 2002 city certificates of participation. On May 12, 2015, the city council authorized the refunding and upsizing of the 2002 city COPs to take advantage of the low interest rate environment to lower interest costs and to yield approximately $8 million of new proceeds to finance public capital improvement projects. To raise new proceeds, the maturity of the 2015A lease revenue bonds will be extended from 2032 to 2045 while keeping annual debt service payments at the current level of approximately $1.55 million. Council also directed staff to engage and assemble a bond financing team. The city retained the services of Urban Futures as financial advisor, Stradling Yoga Carlson and Ralph as bond counsel, Jones Hall as disclosure counsel, and US Bank as trustee. The bond financing team prepared and advertised a request for proposal for an underwriter. The firms of Samuel A. Ramirez and Mezaro Financial were selected as co-underwriters based on quality of proposal and refunding costs. This refunding is similar to the refinancing of a home mortgage to raise additional funds to make home improvements. Proceeds from the issuance of the 2015A lease revenue bonds will be used to pay off the existing 2002 city COPs, and additional proceeds of approximately $8 million will be available. of approximately eight million dollars will be available to the city to build a much-needed new fire station to replace existing fire station number six, which has been operating out of a converted house on Chapman Avenue, and to renovate the lobby of the police station headquarters. The lot size of fire station number six does not accommodate needed expansions to accommodate the increasing size of fire apparatus, and police sta, and police station lobby renovations will enhance security and provide needed interview rooms to facilitate the taking of citizen reports. The refunding and upsizing is expected to reduce the average annual interest cost by approximately one point two-six percent while keeping annual debt service payments at the current level of approximately one point five-five million dollars. It is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing and approving the issuance of the lease revenue bonds series two thousand and fifteen A in an aggregate, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty-eight million dollars and authorize in substantial form the execution and delivery of a ground lease, lease agreement, indenture, escrow agreement, continuing disclosure certificate, a bond purchase agreement, and authorize the distribution of an official statement in connection with the issuance of the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority lease revenue bonds, ser, series two thousand and fifteen A. It is recommended that the public financing authority adopt the resolution authorizing and approving the issuance of the lease revenue bonds series two thousand and fifteen A in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed twenty-eight million dollars and authorize in substantial form the execution and delivery of a ground lease, lease agreement, indenture, assignment agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and authorize the distribution of an official statement in connection with the issuance of the Garden Grove Public Financing Authority lease revenue bonds series two thousand and fifteen A, and authorize the city manager/executive director or his designee to enter into all necessary and related agreements and documents for execution, delivery, and dissemination as applicable to finalize the issuance of the lease revenue bonds series two thousand and fifteen A. This concludes the presentation and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, any questions to staff?
One question. I'm a little bit confused about, uh, why we need to extend, uh, from, the maturity from, uh, from two thousand and thirty-two to two thousand and forty-five.
The purpose of the refunding and upsizing was to try to keep debt service payments level on an annual basis, so in order to do that, the extension of the maturity was necessary.
But isn't that, that we, we have a much lower interest rate?
Yes, council member, that, that is, you're correct, but the whole purpose of extending it is to be able to, you know, get out some money to do the capital improvement. If we kept the maturity term the same, yes, you would know interest rate and not be able to take out any mon, not as much money as we need. So, that extension allows us to take, take out additional money up to the eight million dollars that's been, uh, that we know we need for the new fire station, uh, to replace fire station number six and to do the improvements and however. That's how we're able to, uh, get that kind of funds out by extending each other and also taking advantage of the low interest rates.
So, so in order to get an additional eight million dollars, we have to extend it by about twelve years or so?
Yeah, we had to extend it, and the, the direction or the goal was, we, we currently have outstanding bonds right now that are, you know, due in two, twenty, 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 right? The debt service payment on that is at one point five million dollars. We wanted to keep that the same, so we're not having any increase on our, any budget impact, so to speak. So, the only way we could do that is extend it a, uh, twelve more years, keep the budget the same, so we're, you know, we're not upsetting our budget, but extract enough money out of it to build this much-needed capital improvements.
And the majority of this eight million dollar will be to build, to help pay for the, the cost of building that fi, new fire station?
Yeah, it will build this fire station, and we will have approximately, uh, one point two, one point five million dollars for the police building renovations. So, that will take out a bunch.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so we should actually open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this particular item.
Mr. Mayor Protam, at the risk of confusing it any further into some of the citizens who asked about DC twenty-eight million dollars and the agenda, these big numbers, uh, this refunding, we're, we're doing a re-issuance of twenty-eight million dollars, we're paying off an existing twenty-two million dollar debt we have, and with that difference, that, and because of the good work of our finance department to take advantage of prevailing low interest rates, we're able to create this additional fund of eight million dollars that we're using to build a new fire station for our firefighters. So, that's kind of the, the, the understa, you know, the, the plan for what we're doing here.
Thank you, Charles.
I only have two questions. First is, we are borrowing on bonds, twenty-eight million dollars. The sole purpose of this is to provide facilities for our fire department. Now, that is, of course, a strategic, uh, objective of the city is to protect its citizens by having the services they need, including a fire department. But I wonder, if we don't utilize the entire twenty-eight million dollars, at what point can we say that's achieved everything we wanted it to achieve and we don't need to continue, uh, keeping any more of the money we can return, whatever is left after we've completed our projects? But the most important question I have to ask is, where is the money coming from to pay the interest on these bonds? Is it part of our water bill, part of our property taxes? I'd just like to know where the money's coming from to pay off the bonds, because all of the citizens of Garden Grove are going to be involved in this debt. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak on that? Please.
I just have a quick question. To gain that eight million dollars, what we're then gonna do is be paying one point five million for another thirteen years? Is that how that works out?
Yeah, well, if, if you did address that to us now, we'll-
I'm, I'm sorry.
Just out of protocol?
Counsel, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, uh-
One of my first times here, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, council members and, and the committee, um, again, uh, it sounds like by doing what we're doing, we're gaining the eight million dollars to do the fire department upgrades and the police department upgrades. But to accomplish that, we're extending that out, it would, I guess, be just like refinancing my mortgage. We're refinancing that out to where we're gonna be flat for that same amount, that one point five million a year, but now I have to pay that for another thirteen years? So, to gain the eight million, we're gonna be spending another eighteen million or more? So, I'm not sure if that works out right.
I think that's actually factually correct, and it's for the benefit of bringing an overdue and much-needed fire station forward. Is it, would, staff, would you like to comment on any of that?
Yeah, um, my comment is that, yes, we are extending the maturity, uh, for another twelve years, we're keeping the payments the same.
Payments the-
Staying flat, it essentially, like I pointed out before, zero increase in terms of budget, and, um, we, if we go out today to borrow eight million dollars to do the project, you know, there would be the interest cost associated with that. So, uh, we're still gonna pay interest for that extension, and the interest rate environment is so low today that, that's why we're doing it, to take advantage of that low interest rate, and by extending it, we're able to generate that kind of money to, uh, build the fire station and the police improvements, police station improvements.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any comments or-
Yeah, I want to ask the finance director to, uh, answer Mr. Mitchell's question about the interest and the bonds, just a general summary, uh, what interest does pay for those bonds or who pays for it, and just a quick summary of everything.
Yeah, uh, just to respond to that question, I, um, and I want to repeat what, uh, Mr. Styles, our city manager, said earlier, it's, we're not borrowing twenty-eight million dollars today, we're refinancing twenty-two or so million, twenty-one point something million dollars, and we're extending maturity and taking advantage of interest, the low interest, to take out additional eight million. The new money component of it is about eight million dollars, which is what we will apply to the, uh, fire station, new fire station and the police, uh, building. This, uh, payments doesn't come out of water or sewer or any of that, this comes out of the general fund. The, the payments will remain the same, the one point five, five million dollars that, uh, annual debt service that we have been paying since two thousand and two, uh, and the twenty-two or so million dollars that we still have left, that's the same amount we will continue to pay, and it will continue to come out of the general fund. Well, you can attribute it to maybe taxes or, you know, general taxes, that's what it comes out of. It will not come out of any of the enterprise activities or water bond or sewer, or, those are specific and dedicated and, uh, cannot actually be commingled.
The one speaker didn't make a good point, though, Kingsley, as far as, we take out eight million, but we, yet we pay back, it seems like, was it, uh, one point five million for the next twelve years additionally? Why is there such a disparity between the number that we're pulling out and the number that we're paying back in that time of years?
You know, it's the structure of the, and now, I want to recognize that we have our financial advisor and the underwriter here, maybe they can shed more light on that. Is speaking to the mic?
Is the mic on?
Should be a green light on, or a button that says push in the middle of the base of the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members, this is John Fan from Urban Futures. Uh, the reason why the, the, the payments are gonna be more than eight million dollars is, is because you're paying principal and interest. This is a thirty-year debt, just like when you're borrowing for your home mortgage, you borrow, let's say, a million or five hundred thousand dollars for your home mortgage, you're not gonna pay five hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna pay interest as well. More than likely, you're gonna pay about a million dollars over the thirty-year term. So, that's the reason why you have to pay a little bit more, because of the interest component of the, the bonds.
I, I think most of us understand, understand that, uh, that, that, you, when you, you borrow the loan, you're not just paying for the, uh, for the primary, but you also have to pay for the interest.
Yes.
What we do not understand, and because the, the report doesn't, doesn't, uh, explain it, is that the, uh, we, uh, we refund the, uh, the bond is because we want to take advantage of the, the lower interest rate. So, I do not know what the interest rate was then. Let's just say it was, uh, six percent?
Actually, the interest rate is five point two-six on the two thousand and two bonds.
So, so five point two-six, uh, back then?
Yes.
And now what is in-
Now, it's about four percent.
So, four percent, so we got about one point, roughly one point three percent drop. With that one point three percent, uh, we expect the, the payment would have to, if we did not get the money out, we would expect the payment to be, you know, less than one point five million dollar-
Correct.
And we still pay the, the thing by two thousand and thirty-two.
Yes.
So, uh, the, the, the reason that we do not understand is, you know, how come we, uh, have to, you know, with a much lower interest rate, even if we take out eight million dollar, if we, if, uh, you know, I, we do not know whether the, the number compute correctly, because if we take out eight million dollar, had the interest rate not been dropped to four percent, we understand that we have to pay more or we'd have to pay longer to cover for that additional eight million dollar plus the interest. So, so here, can you explain to us how come, how come, you know, with a much lower interest, much lower interest rate and extend, extended maturity debt, we still have to amount to something like eighteen million dollar more to cover that eight million dollar?
Yeah, it's just the component, the interest component of, of the loan. If you, let's say you take out eight million dollars right now, you, for thirty years, the interest component, eight times, uh, four percent, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, component, times thirty, I believe you'll get up to that, that amount.
Okay. By the way, I think, quick clarification to this, in order to achieve that lower rate right now, even if we just did a, what you call a rate and term refinance, that would still extend the life out past the two thousand and thirty-two, right, in doing a refinance at this point? So, I think that, to achieve that reduction in the rate, it still require refinancing for a longer term. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any comments, questions?
I mean, it seems like it's, it's hard to swallow, but I think that public safety is very important, and I wish we had eight million bucks in the bank just to plop out and just fix the stuff, but it's one of those things that we gotta kind of make do with what we got, you know?
Yeah, I would concur with that, I mean, the, the, this all comes down to upgrading and modernizing a really defunct, dilapidated old fire station, which is an old house that had tarps on the roof and is barely kind of holding together. So, this is long overdue and this needs to be done, we've got to find the money to do it somewhere, it's a, it's an opportune interest rate environment to pull money to go forward on a public safety-related project that is needed in the city, so I have no problem going forward, this is a mechanism to do it without damaging cash flow or with a manageable cash flow that we're used to, just sort of extending the term for the purpose of bringing forward the money to build a new fire station.
If we had the means to pay it outright, though, is there a penalty for us to pay it early? Like, for example, if we came into cash later with developments that we have in the pipeline, can we pay it off and then just be done with it versus waiting?
I would defer to, uh, bond counsel, I believe that the bonds will be callable after some period.
Hi, my name's Kurt Jaeger, I'm with Stradling Yaku, we've been your bond counsel on this and many other matters. The bonds will have a normal call provision in which you will be precluded from prepaying the bonds for a period of years, maybe as many as ten, that would be typical. After the tenth year, you'll be able to call the bonds without any penalty, just as you're doing with the two thousand and two now. But there will be a lockout period for, uh, a period of time. If you ask for it to be much shorter than ten years, it costs you an interest rate typically.
Thank you. Any other comments, motion?
Move adoption of the resolution.
Second. Thank you, please call the vote.
Mr. City Attorney, can they vote on both resolutions at the same time?
Oh, yeah, can we take A one?
I actually recommend that, uh, city council act in its capacity and then, uh, finance authority act in its capacity to adopt its resolution.
I see, okay, so for starters, let's take that first motion as being a city council motion for A one.
Okay, ready?
Call the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, seventeen A two, do we need to go through the whole shebang again and do open a public hearing and?
No, that was a joint public hearing.
That was joint public hearing, okay.
You're just taking-
So, seventeen A two, can I get a motion on behalf of the public finance authority?
I'll move adoption of the resolution.
Second. Call the vote.
Member Beard?
Yes.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from public finance authority members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go back to conducting regular city council business. Next is consent items.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'd like to pull item twenty F.
Okay. Pull twenty F, um, do I have a motion for the balance?
So moved.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you, twenty F.
Yeah, I pulled the side of because it involves the library, Tiber Rubin Library, and I work for the- for the County of Orange, the Orange, the OC Community Resources, and under that is the OC Libraries, and this is one of the libraries that oversee. So I have a, a potential conflict, so I want to recuse myself on this vote.
Gentlemen, do I have a motion for twenty F?
I move the motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
Motion received three yes votes.
Thank you. Move on to public hearings, item twenty-one A.
Twenty-one A is a public hearing on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and Allison Mills is here to present that report.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. The item you have before you tonight is the twenty-fourteen fifteen Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. Federal law requires that all jurisdictions who receive community development block grant, home investment partnership, and emergency solution grant funds assess the activities implemented during the program year and report accomplishments through the CAPER. During the program year, the city utilized its resources to expand and preserve affordable housing, fund public services, and assist seniors and those at risk of homelessness. Some of our notable accomplishments include assisting four hundred and fifty-nine individuals or families with fair housing issues, assisting thirteen hundred and sixty seniors with services and meal delivery, homeless prevention and intervention services to help eight hundred and seventy-three people avoid or recover from homelessness, abatement of unsafe or unsanitary living conditions in two hundred and thirty-seven units, assisting sixty-two low-income families with rental assistance in the form of a voucher, and entering into an affordable housing agreement for the construction of forty-seven new units for low-income seniors and families. The public review and comment period for the CAPER began on September fourth and continues until the conclusion of the public hearing tonight. You have a yellow sheet before you that contains the minute excerpt of the comments received from the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission meeting, which was held on November, on September fourteenth. Tonight, you are asked to hold a public hearing to collect public comments and direct staff to submit the CAPER to HUD. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, the staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item, so I will open it up and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak on this particular item, on the CAPER. Seeing none, we will close. Gentlemen, do I have any comments, questions, or a motion?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Call the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Beard, sorry. Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item twenty-two A under items for consideration.
Item twenty-two A is adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series two fifteen, and Ellis Chang is here to give that report.
Mayor Protam, this is the typical refinancing to reduce debt service payments and because of low interest rates. So with that, I'll have our county manager, Andy Stern, present.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and members of city council. Tonight I have before you a request for adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of the Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series twenty fifteen and to authorize the execution and delivery of all necessary and related documents in substantial form. On May twelfth, twenty fifteen, the city council authorized the refunding of the two thousand and four water certificates of participation and directed staff to engage and assemble a bond financing team. The city retained their services of Urban Futures as financial advisor, Stradling Yocu, Carlson and Ralph as bond counsel, and US Bank as trustee. Given the short maturity, the team determined that a direct lender was the best refunding alternative in terms of cost savings and efficiency. The bond financing team prepared and advertised a request for proposal for the refunding. J.P. Morgan Chase was selected as the direct lender based on quality of proposal and refunding costs. The refunding is expected to reduce interest costs by approximately two point six four percent and save the city approximately one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars annually through the final maturity date of twenty twenty-three. The proceeds of the new debt is estimated at eight point five million dollars, along with the one point three million dollars in the bond reserve fund will be used to pay off the existing debt and related cost of issuance. It is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution to authorize and approve the issuance of the Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series twenty fifteen in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight point five million dollars and authorize in substantial form the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust, bond, bond purchase contract, escrow agreement, and any other necessary and related documents, and authorize the city manager or his designee to enter into all necessary and related agreements and documents for execution and delivery as applicable to finalize the issuance of the Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series twenty fifteen. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? Or comments? Or a motion?
Move to approve.
I move the motion. Oh, sorry. Second.
Call the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Fong?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Yes.
Motion received for yes votes.
Thank you. We've already conducted item twenty-three A, so that brings us to, well, we're on matters now from council. That brings us to item twenty-three B, as requested by councilmember Phan.
Thank you. I asked to have this up for possible discussion in the future, just because I want to see what we can do to help our, some of our more, better preserve our older homes here in the, in the city, to preserve the heritage. And some of the speakers talked about the Mills Act, and I don't know much about it. So I was hoping we can bring it forward to council in a few weeks to discuss our options and what we can do, maybe from a cost perspective or just a feasibility perspective of having something like that for our city to preserve some of the homes that we have here. Do we need a motion or a vote for anything like that?
Well, if the city council wishes for a staff report to come back and an action item, then you do need a motion and a vote, as we did last time, to add an item to the agenda as an action item. If it's just a discussion item, then no vote is required. Mills Act is basically state law that allows a property owner reduce property tax rate in return for maintaining the house as a historic property. And if they want to do any renovations or any work to the house, then they have to keep it in the historical context and they have to go through historical review and approvals. So in order to start a Mills Act-type program, we would need to set up a commission that would review these types of requests for renovations of homes or construction of homes that are listed as historical homes. We also need the commission to identify homes that would meet the historical qualifications. The state of California has standards, and the federal government has standards for nationally-recognized historic structures. So it would take some work initially to set up commissions, to set up a process for, for identifying the, the types of structures that would meet the qualifications to be listed as historic properties, and then to manage those and to provide the, the wherewithal to, to approve, you know, proposed changes and, and construction types issues with respect to these homes. That's a ten thousand foot level. I mean, we can provide a staff report and give you, let you know what type of ordinances we need to adopt, what we need to do, but obviously that would require work to come back for you. And then, I mean, we can do a workshop if you prefer to do that, because obviously you don't know enough as to what it would entail. So it's really up to the city council what it wishes to do at this point.
Yeah, I don't think we need an action item to take, do anything for it the next time. I just want to have a discussion on the feasibility of it and see if it's something that we want to take on. I think it's a good thing to preserve valuable property in the city for posterity, but if it's going to be really burdensome to the city, I don't want to overburden this. So just a discussion in general, I think, would be nice.
Just a couple of quick questions. For one, my understanding is it only applies to owner-occupied historic properties.
Yes.
But also, what's the definition of a historic property, like built before a certain year or what's the?
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, and I don't have that in front of me, the state has guidelines in order, and you have to meet certain guidelines in order to be listed or recognized. The city can adopt its own, but it would be a city-recognized historic structure as opposed to a state-recognized or a federal-recognized structure. So, you know, if, if you want to have your own city, then you can set up your own criteria, you know, the year that it was built, the type of style that it was built, and whether there has been any major renovations that have taken away all of the original style of the, of the structure. Home, I mean, it could be a garage, it could be a warehouse. It, it doesn't have to be a single-family home, and it does have to be owner-occupied because they're gating, it's almost, it's, they're getting like a tax exemption.
Right.
And there's a penalty. If they want to get out of the Mills Act contract, then they pay a penalty that is, it's basically like taking money out of your 401K before you reach a certain age. You have to pay back some of the credits that you received plus a penalty. So it's a burden, just for the city, but also for the property owner that signs the contract.
And, and I might add to the law director's comments. By happenstance, I was in a meeting with the city manager in Orange today, and of course Orange has a large historic district downtown. They've been using the Mills Act provisions for a long time, although the city manager did say there, there, it, it does take some administrative staff. They have a dedicated person who does, it's primarily their job. The city of Orange actually caps the number of applications they, they take each year to ten. They take ten new applications, and then they have to continue to monitor those throughout the life of the agreement. And, you know, it's, they, they go on, and there's no deadline to receiving those. They have to have staff go out and verify the condition of the house. They're still being maintained in accordance with the rules of the council. So we'll come back and, and be prepared to have a little more discussion with you, but that's kind of the gist of, I think, what we know about it so far.
Thank you. So do we need any kind of action on that or just?
Well, if, if all you need is, is additional discussion, you just want to give us direction to bring back more information, then you don't need a, a vote. We can just, we have direction from the council and no, no majority opposition, then we can go ahead and do that research and bring it back to you.
As part of that, if it's simple and easy enough, I'd love to just hear kind of a rough inventory of how many properties we have in the city, which would even be within the realm of consideration at this type of thing. Anyways, like, do we have a lot? My, my guess is there's not all that many. Okay, thank you. Any other matters or comments from councilmembers in general before we adjourn?
I just want to say that I was thrilled to see Alan Roder tonight, and he's been a great help for the city, and I hope to be able to see him, you know, every now and then. Well, thank you, Alan, for, you know, helping us and guiding us over the last, you know, many months.
I'll echo those sentiments. I think Alan Roder served a very good purpose for the city. He was the right person at the right time as interim city manager. We were going through some difficulties, and I think in the transition of him being there was a stabilizing force. His expertise, his acumen, his just personality, you know, he became, I consider him a friend, and I think he may be a better councilperson while he was here, and I appreciate everything he did. And it's good to hear we're in good hands with the successor following, with the high praise he's given you. And so you've got some big shoes to fill. I know you'll fill them quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Phan?
And then this Saturday at two o'clock, we, the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove, they're having a fundraiser over at their main branch next to Quanis Land, so if you have time, please come on by. It's at two o'clock this Saturday.
Thank you. I have a few different things. So for starters, I'm excited to announce a new partnership between the city and Google to help make local businesses more visible to customers. It's called Let's Put Our Cities on the Map. It's a program that gives businesses a free listing on Google's search engine to help boost and improve their online presence. The city is encouraging local businesses to attend a free Google workshop where participants can develop their free listing or improve an existing one. The date is Tuesday, October twentieth at six P.M. right here at the Courtyard Center. Please go to the city's website or social media to learn more about the program and sign up for the free workshop. In addition, I also just like to extend personal gratitude for Alan Roder and all he's done for the city during his interim tenure, and I, I would hope that he would still stay actively involved with the city. I know one thing in particular I could think of is these discussions recently about our homelessness problems, not here just in the city but around the county. I know he's been a strong advocate and a leader in, in that regard, so perhaps he can stay involved and help us find some creative solutions on how to bring funding forward to address those type of needs and, and help improve our city in that regard. And I'd like to close the meeting tonight in memory of retired city employee Don Butterfield. Don passed away earlier this month at the age of seventy-nine. He began his thirty-four-year career with the city of Garden Grove in May of nineteen sixty-one, working as a planning aide in the community development department, and retired in September of nineteen ninety-five. We send our deepest condolences to his family and his beloved wife, Margaret Butterfield. On that note, we are adjourned.
Mr.?
Oh, one more question.
Yeah, comments from city manager.
Mr. Protam, members of council, just a, a quick update on an important project with Galeria. Two, two council meetings ago, you asked our office to send some correspondence to members of the Cathay Bank to outline a, a schedule for trying to move things along. We've been diligent in communicating with them, and, you know, I'm happy to report today that we recently, at the end of last week, we got notice that Cathay Bank and the Brook Street Development Company that they're working with have agreed upon a purchase-sale agreement that, that they will now take forward and start, begin discussions with the Hope Foundation, which is the third important piece of that partnership. And Mr. Mayor Protam, you and I, and Councilman Bowie, we were recently at the Hope Foundation board meeting, and I, I think it seemed to all of us that some of the parties are really at the right point of trying to figure something out. So we're hopeful the city administration will remain diligent in trying to keep everyone focused on this important project, and I just wanted to let all of you know that that PSA agreement had been signed between Cathay and the Brook Street developers, so I just wanted to pass that along.
Well, that's a huge step in the right direction, and we're hoping that the third party comes together and officializes it, and we can see something move forward with that finally. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Two closed session.